I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair would welcome public comment on non-agended items. Oh, my error, roll call.
Counselor Fornier?
Here.
Counselor Grant?
Here.
Counselor Sykes?
Here.
Counselor Ali?
Yeah.
Counselor Pelletier?
Here.
Counselor McDevitt?
Here.
Counselor Bullock?
Here.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Mayor Dion?
Here. Come on up.
Hello, folks. Joey Brunel, 37 Pine Street. So, I'm guessing your council rules, being that this is now on the agenda, prevents me from saying the first part of my comment regarding ICE. But I will skip to the second part of my comment, which will give suggestions about what could be done outside of this, beyond this. I'm going to hope that's okay.
Well, the Speaker, it's not on the agenda yet. We're going to get it on the agenda. At that juncture procedurally, I'm going to invite public comment.
Okay, so I could...
You'll be able to come back.
All right, great.
All right.
Steven Sharfer of Brecka Street in Portland. I want to speak to one item that's not on your agenda, but is on your, in your sights. And that is that your, one of your committees, I can't remember which now, had a report about a $45,000 drone that the police department wants to buy. I have no problem with the police department buying a drone. I have no problem with buying multiple drones. But spending $45,000 on one drone is excessive. You can go buy one for $500 that will do exactly what the police department needs. And for another 500, they can do everything they need to equip it. The idea that you would spend that much money on a drone because it's a government product is just insane. And go buy a couple $500 drones and you'll, you know, and be done with it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment on a non-agended item?
Well, of course. William Higgins, right now 654 Riverside Street in Portland, better known as the Homeless Services Center. I thank again the council and the city for providing that facility. It has now, but that's for 240 men, which is beyond the initial capacity of like 150 or so. And there's space for 60 women. Unfortunately, they're running out of room. And I realize people are coming from other places and the York County Shelter is closed down. So we need to look at some sort of a plan for the winter time to help people, whether it's a potential sanctioned tent and cabin or finding, and another thing, I don't know if we've got any place to be a warming site, if the state has put out bids for that, or if another place like Common Space has bid on something like that. I was, have not been cognizant of those issues. But again, thanks the city for what they've done and what they do for homelessness. And I'd like to help the city raise funds to help defray some of those costs as well. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to provide comment on an unagended item?
Yeah, my name is Ryan Dunlap with 82 Hanover Street and Argenta Brewing Company. I just kind of wanted to bring it to the awareness of the city council of a lot more issues with transient or unhoused folks, for my business in particular. In Bayside, we've had people been coming in in the last month, probably a quadruple the rate that we were seeing. People coming in who were overdosing, passing out on our, the front of our property, trying to come in and pass out inside. And it's mostly just a safety concern for me and my staff. Just wanted to bring it to the awareness that it's something we're seeing way more than we did in the last year and a half. We've done business there. Just want to ensure that my staff is comfortable working and that they're not being harassed on a daily basis because they're not mental health professionals and nor am I. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment on an unagended item?
Hello. Gregory Gould, 168 Milton Street here in Portland. At the Finance Committee last week, Counselor Sykes recommended expanding the P-Step program. This would be another expense to most taxpayers at a time when the counselor is also looking to expand the arts budget, replace the family shelter, and implement social housing. There were two justifications for giving for the expanding the program. One is Donald Trump, and the other is that it would cost the average taxpayer just $135. A lie of omission is still a lie, and just $135 is a lie of omission. And it is a way of gaslighting people into minimizing the impact of this policy. Unless my taxes and other fees to the city next year won't increase more than $135, just $135 is a lie. There is no just when the Portland Press Herald publishes an article that we will face higher inflation with tighter incomes than the rest of the nation. There is no just when health insurers are looking for their largest increase in five years. There is no just when the rich get a tax cut and the middle class does not. And there is no just when my taxes went up $1,200 this year. It's easy to judge a book by its cover and assume someone like me must have money. But we are struggling. We are a one-income family. My out-of-pocket medical expenses last year were $9,000. We've had to replace both cars, our roof, a leaking fridge, and our stove with one partially working burner. Just makes it look like expanding funding programs happen in a vacuum. And these programs that Kate wants to expand are based on honorable ideas. But we have to consider the totality of these programs in our budget. Donald Trump is going to be president for the next three years. I didn't vote for him, and there's nothing I can really do about it. And I'm concerned that the city is going to just jump to tax increases for his rapidly changing economic plans. In the city, spending is much of a problem as revenue generation, and the city council is failing at the responsibility to balance the two. At the last city council meeting, the city had a real opportunity to bring revenue into the city with a punitive vacancy ordinance, which has been successful in several cities throughout the country. The entire point of that ordinance should be to get commercial landlords to lower rent so the city can generate revenue with new businesses. It would be nice to have some commercial rent control because we need the revenue from businesses. Banks don't care about art when deciding to give a business a loan. They care about rent. Instead of giving loans to put lipstick on a pig, we could have actual art galleries open downtown because it is the arts district. And I'm really disappointed that the city took a great idea and turned it into a cluster for the city that creates even more work and financial burdens for staff.
Thank you. The chair just wants to make a quick comment. You're welcome to share your opinions, conclusions, and other commentary to the council. We cannot hear something that includes reference by name to a particular council. You're here to talk to us about our activity as a whole or an issue that affects all of us, but referencing it to a counselor, this chair can't accept that. So I'm just giving notice in the future. All right? That's fine. Thank you very much. Doesn't take away from your comments, just makes it more general for the council to consider.
I wrote it both ways.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment on an unagended item? Seeing none. I want to take a moment to announce that the chair will seek a motion from the floor on an unagended item. In order to do so, the chair would entertain two motions. One, to waive the rules so that we can entertain this floor motion. And second, a motion for passage of the resolution in question. During that timeline, the chair will entertain comments from the public on the merits of the resolution. So I just wanted to put that out there early. So if you're intending to stay, that's when it'll be considered. Is there a question? No, it's not. I'm going to take it after proclamations. Is everyone clear about that? I assumed there was public here to speak, and I didn't want to hold them for a whole meeting. With that, are there any other announcements from the council itself? Seeing none. Chair would take a motion for the approval of the minutes of the special September 3, 2025 city council meeting. Moved by Counselor Ali?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sykes. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Clerk will now read Proclamation 52526.
Proclamation 52526, recognizing Batumbo United as cultural treasure sponsored by Mark Dionne, Mayor.
Chair would yield to Counselor Ali.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation, recognizing Batumbo United as a cultural treasure. Whereas Portland, Maine is proud to be home to a diverse and vibrant cultural community that lives of the residents and visitors, and visitors alike. And whereas Batumbo United is a drumming ensemble that embodies the musical and spiritual traditions of Burundi culture, representing the power of rhythm, unity, and resilience. And whereas Batumbo United was founded by members of Portland Burundian community, one of the largest African immigrant communities in Maine, and has become a beacon of culture, pride, and artistic excellence. And whereas the ensemble, whereas the ensemble's performance tanked by their, marked by their powered choreography, intricate rhythm, and hand-painted royal drums have captivated audiences across the state and beyond, from school assemblies to major arts festivals. And whereas Batumbo United promotes intergenerational connections, cultural education, and youth engagement by mentoring youth drummers and welcoming community participating in both rehearsals and performance. And whereas ensemble is, whereas the ensemble, whereas the ensemble's artistic fosters intercultural understanding and community cohesion, bringing people together across linguistic, ethnic, and geographical boundaries through the universal language of music. And whereas Batumbo United continues to elevate Portland's reputation as a welcoming and inclusive city, contributing to the city's creative economy and cultural vibrancy, now therefore be it resolved that I, Mark Dionne, Mayor of the City of Portland, and members of the City of Council, do hereby recognize Batumbo United as cultural treasure and commend the group for its outstanding contribution to the city's cultural life. Artistic legacy and communal spirit, signed and sealed this 15th day of September 2025 by Mark Dionne, Mayor of City of Portland. My apology, my glasses is not clean, so I'm not seeing things properly. So I'm sorry.
Thank you, Counselor Ali. Is there someone here to receive the proclamation from Counselor Ali? Please approach. Clerk will now read Proclamation 62526.
Proclamation 62526, recognizing September 15 through September 21, 2025, as diaper need awareness week sponsored by Mark Dionne, Mayor.
Chair will yield to Counselor Bullock.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas diaper need is the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy, and can adversely affect the health and well-being of babies, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys and research studies report a significant number of families struggle with diaper need, and many delay changing a diaper to extend the available supply. And whereas infants and toddlers go through six to 12 diapers each day during two to three years that they wear diapers. And whereas diaper banks across the country saw enormous increase in demand for diapers and expanded their distribution for diapers by an average of 86% during the COVID years, and that is not going down, I will tell you. And whereas a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs that enable children to thrive and parents to work. And whereas without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention, resulting in medical costs, destabilizing of families' economic prospects and well-being. And whereas Portland is proud to be home to trusted community-based organizations that distribute diapers through various channels. And whereas the staff and volunteers at diaper banks continue to serve on the front lines of Portland's by helping families in our communities during crisis while experiencing greatly increased demand for diapers due to poverty and economic challenges. And whereas the people of Portland recognize that diaper need is a public health issue and that diaper banks play a critical role in supporting families and advancing our collective economic growth. And now therefore be it resolved that Mark Dionne, the mayor of City of Portland, Maine, and members of the Portland City Council do hereby declare September 15 to 25, 2025 as diaper need awareness week in the City of Portland, and invite residents of Portland to thank the dedicated volunteers and staff at diaper banks for their meaningfully, meaningful service contributions during this, and to spread awareness of this important issue so that all of Portland's children and families can thrive and reach their full potential. Signed and sealed this 15th day of September by Mayor Mark Dionne, City of Portland.
Thank you, Counselor Bullock. Is there someone here to receive the proclamation? Well, it would be relevant to your daytime. Right then. Clerk will now read Proclamation 72526.
Proclamation 72526, recognizing September 15 through October 15, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month sponsored by Mark Dionne, Mayor.
Chair will yield to Counselor Pelletier.
Proclamation recognizing September 15 to October 15, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas each year from September 15 to October 15, America acknowledges the vital contributions of and celebrates our Hispanic-Latin heritage. And whereas the date of September 15 is significant as the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence date on September 16 and September 18 respectively. And whereas Hispanic-Latin Americans have written crucial chapters of our nation's history, hungrily defended our country in war and built prosperity during times of peace. And whereas this community runs successful businesses, teaches our next generation of leaders, and pioneers scientific and technological breakthroughs. And whereas Hispanic-Latin Americans represented an array of distinct and vibrant cultures, each of which enriches our communities in valuable ways. And whereas Hispanic-Latin leaders like Cesar Chavez have marched for social justice and helped advance America's journey toward a more perfect union. And whereas there are numerous Hispanic-Latin students in our city's schools, colleges, and adult education programs, representing one of the fastest-growing segments of our youth. And whereas we are grateful for the many contributions Hispanic-Latin American men and women and organizations like Presente Maine add to our community and the vibrancy they weave into the City of Portland. Now therefore be it resolved that I, do I read this part?
You do.
Okay. I, Mark Dionne, Mayor of the City of Portland.
I know, it seems weird, but go ahead, Counselor. You're doing a good job.
Hereby declare September 15, October 15, 2025, Hispanic-Latin Heritage Month, and invite residents to exercise and celebrate diversity this month and every month.
Thank you, Counselor Pelletier. Clerk will now read Proclamation 82526.
Proclamation 82526, recognizing September 30 as the National Day of Remembrance for the U.S. Indian Boarding Schools, sponsored by Mark Dionne, Mayor.
Chair yields to Counselor Fornier.
Thank you so much. I was trying to decide if I'm going to read from my computer or from this. I'm at that stage where readers, non-readers. Anyway, recognizing September 30, 2025, as National Day of Remembrance for U.S. Indian Boarding Schools. Whereas the City of Portland stands in solidarity with Maine tribal, regional, state, and national governments to recognize the traumatic and harmful history of Indian boarding schools. And whereas in 2021, over 1,200 unmarked graves were discovered at Indian residential school sites in Canada, prompting the U.S. to confront its own history with Indian boarding schools. And whereas the U.S. established nearly 400 Indian boarding schools through policies beginning with the Indian Civilization Act of 1819, with many operated by religious organizations or the government. And whereas by 1926, it is estimated that 83% of Native American children were forcibly removed and placed in these schools. Whereas the Maine Wabanaki State Child Welfare Truth and Reconciliation Commission recognizes the cultural genocide of the Wabanaki people through displacement and violation of tribal sovereignty. And whereas on September 30, 2021, Congresswoman Sharice Davids, a member of the Ho-Chunk Nation, introduced H.R. 5444, Truth and Healing Commission on Indian Boarding Schools Policies Act, in response to the discoveries made in the United States and Canada in previous years. This commission was intended to begin the process of investigating and analyzing the records from the 408 known Indian boarding schools. Whereas on May 11, 2022, the first volume of the Federal Indian Boarding School Initiative investigative report was published by the Department of the Interior, indicating that more than 50 burial sites had been discovered at United States boarding school locations. In July 2024, the second and final volume of the investigative report was published, providing further details and recommendations for the next steps to pursue healing for the indigenous community. Whereas in her presentation of this volume to the public, then-Secretary of the Interior, Deborah Holland, Laguna Pueblo, said, "The consequences of federal Indian boarding school policies, including the intergenerational trauma caused by family separation and cultural eradication inflicted upon generations of children as young as four years old, are heartbreaking and undeniable." Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Mark Dionne of the City of Portland and members of the city council do hereby recognize September 30, 2025, as a day of remembrance for U.S. Indian boarding schools. And I'll just note that one of the reasons this proclamation is so important to me is if you go onto the Department of Interior's current website, all of the links have been removed, as it's been said, indicated that any previously issued diversity, equity, inclusion, or gender-related guidance on this webpage should be considered rescinded. We are not D E I. We are a political entity and deserve to have our truth and our history in there, in our schools, and remembered. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Chair would now seek a motion to suspend the rules to introduce an unagended item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Phillips, seconded by Counselor Ali. The purpose is to allow us to consider the resolution. Any discussion of this procedural motion? Seeing none. Those in favor, please signify. Roll call. Go ahead.
Yes. Counselor Grant?
Yes.
Counselor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Ali?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor McDevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Dionne?
Yes. Clerk will now read the unagended item.
Resolution condemning non-transparent federal immigration enforcement tactics, reaffirming commitment to the constitutional and community safety principles, and directing further review of proactive local response measures, sponsored by Counselor Phillips and Counselor Ali.
Before I take public comment, is there brief comments from either council or other sponsor? If not, we can bring that up under the discussion of the motion to pass. All right, is there any public comment on this resolution?
Hey, folks. Joey Brunel, 37 Pine Street. I was actually going to give a comment earlier, and now this has sort of superseded it because I didn't know what this was happening, but we're just going to go for it. So I believe I just heard the phrase "non-transparent immigration enforcement tactics." I know you have to be professional. I might not be quite that professional, and I want to call these people what they really are, Donald Trump's secret police. They show up in unmarked vehicles, they wear masks and refuse to identify themselves, they grab people, handcuff them, and take them away, and they never state why the person is being taken away. They're secret police kidnapping our neighbors. This should be completely and totally intolerable. I refuse to believe that there's nothing we can do about it. If we don't push back against this now, what happens when the secret police starts grabbing people for a tweet they made or an organization they belong to? The time to push back against this is right now. Right now. Don't wait until it's too late. So what can you all do? This resolution is a start. I have done some research, and I have a whole list of other ideas that I would just like to use the rest of my time to run through. One, educate residents and parents about their constitutional rights. The works, posters, flyers, workshops, community meetings, like we do with parking bans and new housing developments. Two, ask residents to document ICE activity on video and share widely, like Governor J.B. Pritzker did. Three, demand answers from the county and the sheriff about how much they cooperate with ICE, and make sure the community hears their answer. Sunlight is the best disinfectant. Four, inform the community whenever an incident like this happens within our city with all relevant details about time and location. Standardize these reports. Five, formally request that PD develop and publicize protocols to follow when these secret police kidnappings happen, as San Francisco and L.A. have done. Six, formally contact communities in the region and ask them what they know about ICE activity in their areas, and develop a network for regional information sharing. Seven, ask your lawyers if there's a way that the city could prohibit the county jail from being an ICE detention facility, since it's within city limits. Eight, work with the legislative delegation to pass bills that protect immigrants and ban this kind of lawless behavior from Trump's secret police. The Democratic Caucus is currently starting to discuss which bills to work on next session, so you can jump into that process. Nine, last but not least, state loudly and publicly that these kinds of actions are contrary to the rule of law and to our democratic society. Don't let them get all the airtime. You all have big megaphones. Use them. Plant the flag for American democracy, like Mayor Wu or Governor Pritzker. So do as much research as you did into Vision Zero or cruise ship pollution for this issue, too. The future of our democracy is on the line. It's time to be creative. It's time to be brave. Stand up for your neighbors and for your country. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? I'll go upstairs. No.
Can you hear me now?
You can probably, you want to bring the mic up? It'll be, there you go. That's better. We lost the mic on her.
Okay, I'm talking right into the mic. Okay, better. Thank you. Hi, my name is Carrie Dowdy. I live in Portland. You need my address, 27 Fleetwood Street. But I'm here tonight speaking to you on behalf of the Portland Education Association, our executive board. I am the president of the Portland Education Association. Our schools should be safe places where students can focus on learning and engagement with their peers, instead of worrying that a classmate or a parent will get arrested on school grounds. There are carefully marked speed zones in and around schools. There are restrictions on locating certain types of businesses near schools. Within our schools, doors are locked and visitors are monitored. We have security cameras and practice safety drills with students regularly to prepare for various emergencies. Our schools should be safe places, but they are not. I speak tonight with an appeal to the Portland City Council. We and the schools have made every effort to keep the agents out and establish our schools as safe. We cannot do this alone. We need help. Last week, federal agents invaded our school grounds. This will keep happening. There's no way to tell where or when this will happen next. We can no longer fight this battle alone. We are stronger together. Portland City Council, please help us to protect our students and our public schools. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment on this proposed resolution? Go ahead, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm Sarah Lince. My pronouns are she/her's. My address is 27 Arlington Street. I'm in the balcony tonight because my kiddo's never been up here, and so we're trying a new view tonight. But I'm here with my kiddo tonight to speak in support of this resolution. I also just want to thank the counselors that were in touch with the school district to get our input and advice on what we needed to make sure that our institutions are protected. And I also just wanted to remind us all, as stewards of these institutions that are so vital to our city, that we always have another choice about what we can do to protect our city and to help make it thrive, and to just not forget that the collective... our city and to help make it thrive, and to just not forget that the collective power in this room is capable of so much. And we can't just say our hands are tied, because they're not. We always have another choice, and I really look forward to continuing to work with you on strategies to help keep this city safe.
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment on this resolution? Seeing none, public comment period is closed. Chair would seek a motion for passage.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Ali, seconded by Counselor Phillips. Chair will now yield to Counselor Phillips to read the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution condemning non-transparent federal immigration enforcement tactics, reaffirming commitment to constitutional and community safety principles, and directing further review of proactive local response measures. Whereas the city of Portland is home to a vibrant immigrant community, including many mixed-status families who contribute to the cultural, economic, and social fabric of the city, and many of their children attend the Portland Public Schools. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, a significant percentage of Portland's population identifies as foreign-born residents and first-generation Americans, making Portland one of the most immigrant-rich communities in Maine and New England. And whereas recent federal immigration enforcement activity in the region, particularly by agencies such as U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, Homeland Security Investigations, Border Patrol, and other Homeland Security operatives and their subcontractors, has increasingly involved the use of unmarked vehicles, masked agents, tactical gear, and personnel without visible identification or federal markings. And whereas such tactics have been documented across the country and within New England, creating confusion and fear among residents, undermining public trust, and raising serious concerns about whether those carrying out enforcement actions are legitimate federal agents or individuals posing as law enforcement. And whereas reports and video evidence shows that U.S. citizens and immigrants with lawful status have been detained, questioned, or targeted, I can never pronounce this word, "accobating," sorry, distrust and creating public safety risk. And whereas these enforcement methods create confusion and fear, especially in the absence of clear agency identification, increasing the likelihood of miscommunication, mistrust, civil unrest, and community trauma. And whereas the city of Portland is committed to the rule of law, civil rights, and the safety and dignity of all its residents, regardless of immigration status. And whereas the City Council believes that upholding community trust requires clear, transparent, and accountable practices by all law enforcement agencies operating in Portland. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of Portland and members of the Portland City Council hereby strongly condemn the use of unmarked vehicles, masked agents, and unidentifiable personnel in immigration enforcement activities within the city, especially in and around churches, schools, and other public institutions, recognizing such tactics as harmful to public trust, community safety, and cost to neutral protections. And be it further resolved that the City Council calls upon the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, other federal agencies and their sub-agencies to implement clear, uniform identification standards for all field agents, including marked vehicles, visible agency badges, and advance notice protocols when operating in or near local jurisdictions. And be it further resolved that the City Council hereby refers this matter to Health and Human Services and Public Safety Committee to consider policies and agreements that seek to prioritize transparency and public safety in immigration enforcement, and uphold and protect the civil rights of our community members. Review of such policies and/or agreements should include, but not limited to, monitoring, verifying, and documenting immigration enforcement activities conducted by the city, collaboration and resource sharing with Portland Public Schools and community organizations who are working directly with impacted families, and any additional strategies that seek to address the miscommunication, mistrust, civil unrest, and community trauma caused by the lack of transparency in immigration enforcement.
Thank you, Counselor Phillips. Any commentary from the Council? Seeing none. Seeing none. All those in favor of this resolution, please signify by hand vote. Clerk will record. It's unanimous. Clerk will now read Orders 472526 and 482526.
Order 472526, granting municipal officers approval of Argentina Brewing Company. Application is for Class III and IV food service establishment located at 82 Hanover Street. And Order 482526, granting municipal officers approval of Schnitzer Northeast LLC. Application is for scrap metal recycling license located at 568 Riverside Street, both sponsored by Daniel West City Manager.
Thank you. Chair would entertain public comment on any one of the two license applications or both at this time. All right, then. Chair would entertain a motion for passage on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Sykes, seconded by Counselor Ali. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by hand. Consent calendar passes unanimously. Is there anyone here from Argentina Brewing Company?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Stand down. And is there someone here from Schnitzer? All right, well, I wish we didn't have to meet, as we did a little earlier with your observations, because we want to welcome you to the city and a decision on your part and your colleagues to run a successful business venture here. But I want to assure you that we stand ready to assist you with any speed bumps or hurdles that you're going to confront. All right, then? Welcome aboard. Thank you. By the way, you're free. Unless you want to stay for the entire meeting, you can go now. Okay? You'd be the first that actually stayed behind, so don't feel embarrassed if you want to Okay, then. Clerk will read Communication 42526.
Communication 42526, consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, keeper for HUD-funded programs, by Mary Davis.
My name is Mary Davis. I'm the Housing and Community Development Division Director for the city. This is an annual report that appears on your council agenda about this time every year. It's a required annual report by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The report is the end-of-the-year report for our CDBG, or Community Development Block Program, Home Program, and Emergency Solutions, or ESG, program. It's a report in which we answer a pre-formatted report template that the government gives us, and it basically is an accounting of the number of units provided, whether that be housing or supportive service programs, as well as the number of individuals served, and race and ethnicity data of those individuals. Again, this is an annual report, and it will be filed by the end of the month.
Thanks very much, Mary. It's appreciated. Unless there's any comment, there is comment from the Council. Go ahead, Counselor Sykes. I'll go away, Mary.
So, thank you, Mary. I know this is a lot of work. It's a huge report, and I've read through it topically. It's a lot of information. You know, some of the information in here, I think we could use in kind of a higher-level format, and I'm wondering if I can make a request to have the last 10 years worth of reports sent to me, so I can see if I can look at some trends. I think that would be really helpful to us in how we look at allocation of funds.
10 years of this particular report?
Yep, certainly.
Thank you.
There's no other comment from the Council. The matter is now closed. Clerk will read Order 352526.
Order 352526, amendment to the Portland City Code, Chapter 30, regarding taxi fares, sponsored by the Sustainability and Transportation Committee, Council Regina Phillips, Chair.
Anyone wishing to provide public comment on this proposed order? All right, seeing none. Chair would seek a motion for passage.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Phillips, seconded by Counselor Ali. Discussion, councilors?
May I say something?
Of course.
The taxi drivers that work in the city have been working on the same rate for almost 20 years or so. And so I did work with, I brought this to the Sustainability Committee, and thanks to the Chair, we worked, and then with staff, to bring forward this recommendation to the Council. I think we voted it out of the committee with all present that day. I hope.
Okay. Counselor Ali, do you have an amendment to propose?
Yes, from the original amount.
Yes, I've sought a motion and secured a motion for passage on the main motion. However, you have an amendment that you want to propose?
I want to make an amendment to include all taxi drivers in the city, not just the airport and transportation center.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, so, there was a motion to amend the main motion by Counselor Ali, seconded by Counselor Bullett. Counselor Ali has also incorporated the reason for the motion for an amendment. Is there a question? Counselor Sykes?
I do have a question, just for discussion, but I wondered if Counselor Ali wanted to say anymore about the amendment before we talk about it?
Yes. When this was brought forward earlier at a committee level, it cited the airport and transportation center. When this item was brought together to the committee, we cited just the airport and transportation center taxi drivers. And then later on, I brought forward amendment after the first word, which would include every taxi in the city.
All right, then. Counselor Sykes?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I've taken a look at both the original amendment to Chapter 30 and then Counselor Ali's amendment, and I actually have some concerns about the flattening of the ordinance when we essentially do away with a rate, a specific minimum rate for the airport. The airport is a location where taxis have to queue and spend a considerable amount of time waiting for a ride to hire them, and that extra bump in the fee is intended to cover the cost of that. And so I actually have some concerns about the way this could affect rides at the airport, that no longer would taxi drivers get a little extra money to sit in that line with the kind of, you know, extra time lost there. So I actually have some concerns about that. And then the other thing is that by creating that kind of a flat fee, it disincentivizes the hiring of, or the taking of cab fares for shorter rides. So I worry a little bit that this actually has a flattening effect on the market and might impact the ability of people to get a cab because it's too short of a ride. So, yeah, I'd like to hear what other thoughts people have about this, and if the Sustainability and Transportation Committee discussed that particular issue around the flattening of fees. Thanks.
Chair has a question for the sponsor, Counselor Ali. In terms of the amendment?
Right.
And the effect on the taxi operators, were they briefed on that? Are they aware of what this is doing? And before you answer, and are they supportive of what you're trying to accomplish with this?
Yes, they are. And also, we asked staff to compare this price in other cities the size of Portland, and the best practices, and that is the results of this.
Counsel Pelletier.
My understanding reading this is that if someone gets a taxi ride from Congress Street to Hannaford, and gets a taxi ride from Hannaford back to Congress Street, that will be $20. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I cannot support this. I have people that rely on, I would love if everyone used the bus. That's not a situation we have. I have people that need to get groceries and cannot add $20 to that bill.
Any other comment? All right, then. Chair would ask for a vote on the amendment. All those in favor, please signify. Three. Okay. All those opposed? Six, three. Defeated. Now we go on to the main motion. All those in favor, please signify.
The main motion is, because it's an amendment to the ordinance.
Okay. Roll call, then.
Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Grant?
Yes.
Counselor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Ali?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor McDevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Bullett?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Dan?
Yes. Clerk will now read Order 462526.
Order 462526, improvement agreement between the State and Maine Department of Transportation and the city of Portland regarding pedestrian crossing improvements on West Commercial Street, sponsored by Daniel West City Manager.
Any comments, city manager?
Nothing further. Mike Murray is present this evening, if there are any questions.
All right, then. Is there anyone in the public wishing to provide comment on this pending order?
Stephen Scharf of Brackett Street in Portland. This section of the circumstantial, I don't even know what the term you would use, trail that's going around the peninsula, that's been in the works for many, many years. This is just one section of that trail project, and is much-needed. It would leave just literally, other than the issue with the Libby Town connector between Adalot Field and the train station, it would leave just one section left to go, really. And that would be from where this ends to the eastern side, the commercial street, which is probably the most difficult part for us to figure out, how to deal with it, because it's just a commercial corridor through there. But other than that, we will have, when this is finished and the Libby Town situation is figured out, we will have a complete, virtually a complete encirclement that somebody on a bike or walking can get around the city on trails and off-road availability. I fully support it, and just want to ask when, what the process will be for this. What exactly are you approving tonight? Because it's not exactly clear, whether it's just planning or whether it's actual development of the trail. But, you know, what's the process going forward, and how can we get this to happen as quickly as possible? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment on this pending order? Seeing none. Chair would seek motion for passage. Moved by Counselor Phillips, seconded by Counselor Ali. Chair would invite Director Murray to come forward. In the meantime, Counselor Pelletier, go ahead, unless your intent was to talk.
I was just going to say I very much support this. You know, I don't think Mr. Scharf's questions are unfounded, and I'm looking forward to learning more, but also it won't impact my vote. I'll be a solid yes on this.
Thank you, Counselor. Does anyone have any question for Director? Does anyone have any question for Director Murray? Seeing none. Could you just give me a brief synopsis for the public as to what this money would accomplish?
This is for Phase 3, as has been described. This is for the engineering portion of the project. We would be coming back to you for construction phase sometime in the future.
All right. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, Chair would seek a vote. All those in favor, please signify. Chair will yield to the clerk for first reads.
Order 482526, accepting and appropriating a $118,184 in health and wellness grant funding from the Maine Department of Public Safety for the Portland Police and Fire Department, sponsored by Daniel West City Manager. Order 492526, approving the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Portland and Labor and Trades, ABSSME Local 481-000, sponsored by Daniel West City Manager. Order 502526, accepting and appropriating a $22,500 donation from the estate of Luis Adams to the Portland Fire Department, sponsored by Daniel West City Manager. And Order 512526, accepting and appropriating a $400 donation from Mary Ann Tapp to the Portland Fire Department, sponsored by Daniel West City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair would seek motion to adjourn. Moved by Counsel Phillips, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. All those in favor, signify. It appears unanimous. Good night.